Alright, tell me when you're ready Chris.
You're live.
Would you like to call this meeting in Manchester Council Board of Education order? May I have a roll call please?
Mr. Jenner?
Here.
Mr. Scardine?
Here.
Mr. Gulch? Mr. Staples?
Here.
Ms. Now?
Here.
Ms. Pease? Ms. Soodak? Mr. Pete?
Here.
Addict notice is published on Thursday, August 13, 2020 in the Asbury Park Press, the Manchester Times, who has advised specified time and place of this meeting, and stated that this effect shopping at their premises of this meeting, whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act commits exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, or as this public body is of the opinions that circumstances presently exist. Now therefore, the irresolved by the Manchester Council Board of Education is followed. The public shopping excluded discussion here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matters.
Toss.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be going into closed session and be back in approximately a half hour or so.
Emmy?
Hold on, hold on a second, I gotta beat the mics.
Okay, good. Starting in a minute.
Ms. Beez, are you in the comments? Ms. Beez, can you hear us?
Chris, she says she needs to pin to get it. She said pin on the website stuff.
Nine zero nine. Nine zero nine.
Nine, nine zero nine.
One seven nine.
One seven nine.
Three five five.
Three five five. So what, how many? Chris, what was the last four?
Three five five.
The last four.
Nine three five five.
Nine three five. All right, thanks. Just trying to.
She there?
She's there, yep.
She's on. Ms. Beez, you there? Ms. Beez?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good.
God.
All right, everyone join me in the flag salute, please.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. Please join me in the flag salute, please, of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which is sand, one nation under God, under God, indivisible, with every cheek and justice for all. One nation under God is all one praise. That's your voice, y'all, from here. All right, welcome to the August meeting of the Manchester Township Board of Education. My reports will be very short, to the point tonight. Obviously, there's not been a lot going on, and yet there's been tons of stuff going on at the same time. We will be bringing in teachers next week, one day, following week or two days, where the opening and the students will start on the tenth, I believe, right? Is this the first day for students? All right. This is a different sign of time for everybody. It's going to be a lot of trial and error on the parade. That's what the state tells us, if they might try, if it works, proceed. If it doesn't work, back up, try something else, and go forward. So that's what we're going to be doing. So if your child is supposed to be on, expecting live instruction, and we have trouble, you know, I know this week Zoom failed, when they tried Zoom, at least that's what our vehicle is now, we're using, right, Zoom. Is there a reason why we changed from Zoom, from Google Meet to Zoom?
Yes, and I don't know if Chris you want to add, because there's some different measures that Google was supposed to come out with, but they have not, at this point. But do you want to add some things on that?
Yeah, so some of the features for a small group, so they don't have the ability to be a small group, one to one, basically closing the session out, so it would be very difficult for a teacher to do that. Do those type of features, attendance is present for people.
All right, so Zoom gives this ability, you take attendance, and for teachers, a whole small group, you're in focus.
Yeah, okay.
But they're planning on having any of that, but maybe this September has more. But I went through a Google, uh, Google more topics.
Okay.
They said, they said the beginning September mission's gone, I couldn't hold that nice.
Right.
Okay, so we will be going to Zoom to start, and hopefully Zoom has their ducks in a row, and we'll go from there. I did have an opportunity this week to attend the orientation for the new teachers, the first day. We have a smaller number than we typically have other years, and it was a little different this year with the six-foot spacing and all those kinds of things. But they were walking through the district, I assume that they went through all the area they had to go through, and all the instructions, and all those kinds of things they needed to get to be up and running, successful. And we go from there. Sports this year is going to look very different. We're still waiting for a lot of direction from the state as to how exactly that's going to be, whether fans are allowed in games or not, that's for the state to tell us what our directions are. Games, football games can start in October, other sports were moved in the fall, for the spring, winter. It's all over the place, so, you know, I can say to parents and to members of the community, it's changing. We said back in June, it was gonna be a very fluid summer, it has certainly been that. And we're reacting and doing the best we can, it'd be nice to get out front of this and do what we need to do, but that's what we're standing right now. So, we look forward to students coming back, something like seventy percent of our students will be in class, which is cool. We hope that they come back and we're able to go, as I said to the new teachers the other day, you know, the old adage, "What lights do you feel, lemon's make lemon a woman." The world gives us pandemic, we're gonna do our best to educate students. We go from there. That's it for my end. Mr. Rousher?
Okay, before I give my report, I want to introduce Mrs. Pedrosa and Mr. Rousher, as we said. One of the big questions, obviously, when we do this, and last year, we were faced with one day telling everybody that we're remote only, and with really no training, no warning, our staff, our students, our parents were really thrown into a very difficult situation, which started off to be two weeks. And the direction at that point was, "We'll be two weeks, so just kind of review what you've been doing this year, and you'll be back." At two weeks, I was turned into months. Now, it's hard to imagine, but our students will be out of school for almost six months now. So, it's a very critical break there, and we know not only are there academic gaps, but there's also things that we keep working on, getting our student capacity transition. One of the things is the instructional part, and at this point, we really have, because of the regulation, we can do in-person instruction, but we have to limit the number of people in the school, basically in half, by the allowing of the social distancing and the mask wearing. So, basically, we will have half the students in the building on one day, half the students on the other. And it'll actually be a little less than half, because the governor had made the recommendation, or made the requirement, that students and parents would also opt for remote only. So, at this point, as Mr. Page said, we're somewhere between twenty-six, thirty percent of our students are requested or put in a recommendation for remote only, which means that although there's seventy, or thirty percent of them that will be remote only, there's seventy percent of them that will be not yet. So, really, it's divided into a cohort A, which would be coming in one day, a cohort B, which would be coming in second day, and then, of course, the third group is the remote only, which will not be coming in at all, but we receive all that instruction remotely. The challenge, of course, is that we need to have that instruction equitable, so no matter if you're in person or out, out of remote, it has to be the same instructions, the same opportunities for those students. And that's very challenging for our teachers and for any situation. So, that's Mrs. Pedrosa and Mr. Rousher, they've done a lot of work, as is Mrs. Laskewes, to talk a little bit about how this learning is going to take a look at, and what we can, what can parents expect, and what are some of the teacher expectations, what are our student recommendations, our expectations, and what do we expect from our parents? Because again, it's, it won't be, as Mr. Page said, it's not gonna be the normal opening, but we're gonna try to do as much as we can to make it so that our students are able to listen to our teachers and their instruction. And again, it's, it's a challenge. So, with that challenge, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Pedrosa and Mr. Rousher to kind of give a little demonstration of what our students and our parents will see as far as the instruction. So, up to you guys.
Evening, this is Mrs. Pedrosa, Director of Curriculum, and joined with me this evening is Mr. Rousher, our technology supervisor. Evening, we'll be presenting a brief overview of live instruction in the Manchester Township School District for the 2020-2021 school year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present at a meeting tonight. I would like to discuss some things that are, some technology that's being used in our classroom, some technology that we're leveraging, that had been previously existed in the classroom, some technology that we purchased this year. The first item is the Epson projector. So, each classroom is outfitted with an Epson projector that basically allows the teacher to project from their desktop to the wall. This allows the students in classroom to be able to see an enlarged image or video of what the teacher is displaying to the class. Also, each teacher is outfitted with a Windows PC desktop, so they have the ability to connect a Zoom meeting to, on that desktop, connect the microphone in, allows basically the projector to be able to be connected to that PC, so then they can display that image. Each teacher also is given a Chromebook, it's a Lenovo new Chromebook that we just purchased this summer. It's a flip Chromebook, it actually acts like a tablet, so it has the ability to act like a Chromebook or tablet, but also has the ability to be annotated and be able to write on like a whiteboard. So, there's a stylus that goes with it, it allows the teacher to flip up into annotation mode, and it basically can write on like they're writing on a whiteboard or using it as a digital presenter. Allows both people at home and who, students who are in class, to see the same thing across the Epson projector. And lastly, we purchased teacher lapel microphones, these are wireless microphones, we felt those important for teachers to be able to be at front and center of the room. We wanted also, too, it was important for students who are at home to hear the communication and the lesson from the teacher, and basically to hear no background noise. We felt for security reasons, we didn't want students who are at, in classroom to be able to then communicate with students at home. We also didn't want the students at home to go hear background noise, such as heating and cooling ventilation, we didn't want any kind of alarms that are going off or anything like that, that's heard in the background, to be heard by students who are at home. We felt that was very important for the equitable access, to be able to have those students at home only hear the instructor and what's actually being taught on the lesson.
So, the hybrid learning environment, what will the students in the classroom see, and what would the students learning remotely see? Students in the classroom will have a Chromebook, and they may have the following tabs open: Google Classroom, Digital Programs, and the students will receive instruction in person. Students learning remotely, these students will have a Chromebook with the following tabs open: a Zoom session, Google Classroom, and perhaps some of the digital programs that the teachers are using, such as Big Ideas or StudySync. The delivery will include students hearing the teacher and seeing the tabs that are being shared, they'll see the teacher in front of the classroom, and then they can also see the teacher through the Zoom session. Essentially, the students in the virtual setting will have the same class experience as the students that are in the classroom, having in-person instruction.
Alright, so part one, creating a synchronous learning environment. We felt it was important for our teachers at all levels of use of technology to be able to use, do these lessons, to be able to use a synchronous learning environment. We felt it was very important that, you know, somebody who basically does not really know how to utilize technology, to be able to participate and do lessons in this environment. So, with that, we, we've kind of prepared what is use, what's gonna be needed for the teacher to be able to get on. So, the first thing would be to prepare the technology for use. So, that's gonna include turning the desktops on, turning the projectors on, unplugging the microphone from being charged, connecting the microphone, turning it on, and then obviously, like, turning your digital presenters on, logging into all those devices. The next thing would then to be, prepare like your Zoom session, so you're gonna schedule your Zoom meeting for the day, so whatever time it's gonna be, so whether they're clicking on the Zoom session, then they're scheduling it for tomorrow at nine AM, or whatever time may be for the class. Then they're, they're basically gonna invite their students to that. So, what they're gonna do with that is basically just gonna copy that link that the Zoom session creates, and then put it in their Google Classroom. Basically, that just allows the students to go in and be able to join their Zoom session right from the Google Classroom, they don't have to individually create sessions for each one of their students, it's just a one-click, one copy and paste, and then the students have access to, you know, to access that Zoom session. And then, lastly, they're gonna start the session when the time comes.
So, the next part is, teaching in your synchronous learning environment is presenting your screen. The teacher will have the ability to present the screen, annotate with a whiteboard, and students will be able to engage, both the students in the classroom and the students that are following along from home.
For the students' experience at home, we felt it was very important that they get the same experience, as we said before, as the students who are in class. So, what they're gonna do is join the classroom using their Google Classroom code that the teacher gives them from their Zoom session. They're going to then join the meeting, and then basically, the teacher will instruct them if they're using the microphone or they're using the camera to turn those on or turn them off, and just to follow instructions, just like they would in the classroom. You know, whatever they're, you know, instead of maybe they're pulling out their English book, now they're opening up a Chrome tab and going to a Google Doc, so it's just all let off instruction by the teacher, and I, you know, I think just, I'm accustomed to getting used to things like this, and thinking a little different, it's gonna, it's gonna change the culture with technology. We have some examples of what it looks like from a teacher and student's perspective, so this is a, what it looks like from a teacher at home, or, sorry, a student at home. So, we have a lesson being taught here. If you notice, to the right corner of the screen, this is a Zoom session set up with a teacher, and she has a camera on, it's her digital presenter, so it's her document camera, it's being, it's flipped and being used like a webcam. To the right, you'll see also, too, all the students who are joined, all their camera and microphones are off. The teacher is, if you notice, has two sessions, one is here, and one's in the bottom, the bottom one is their Chromebook, she's logged into both sessions, so basically it allows her to annotate, allows her to write on her Chromebook like a whiteboard, and so she has control over both locations. She's presenting right now a web resource, so the students in class and students at home are seeing this on their screens, or actually, the students in class. Last year, she's seeing this, just on the whiteboard, and the students at home are actually seeing this on their entire Chromebook screen. And this is what it's gonna look like for the students who are in class. So, that's, that's kind of what a display is like, so there's the whiteboard, there's the microphone the teacher's wearing, she's writing on the Chromebook, and then, you know, it's being presented digitally through the use of the Chromebook and PC.
Additional instructional experiences could include pre-recorded videos, small group one-on-one live instruction through Zoom, and then assignments that are posted through Google Classroom.
We have some example of those pre-recorded lessons here, so if you notice, we have a smore based off of one of the lessons that was done prior to this year, so here's a unit lesson, here's a recorded video, so basically, it's like a flipped classroom, so the teacher kind of gives, gives a, you know, an outline of what they need to do for the lesson, and then basically, it outlines what needs to be done on each one of these videos with an objective. So, then it allows the students to go back in, and it allows them basically to use it in a flipped classroom environment, you know, maybe they need to go on some small group after they've watched that video, there's any explicit teaching with specific skills or strategies, or they're doing maybe a conference just with that student on a one-to-one basis, doing those pre-recorded videos will allow them to do that.
This actual slide is a live session that was hosted by one of our principals, Mrs. Waldron, the principal of Manchester Township Elementary School, and after the students were involved in a summer program that was mostly done through remote instruction, she had what was called a beach party, and so the students were invited, joined her in a session, and the children were able to share with her their experiences, what they thought about the program, and then actually, they were able to speak one-on-one with their peers as well. And so, this is a photo of the children actually in that particular session. The next slide is a testimonial, which are testimonials offered by parents regarding the live instruction. And you can see that parents' feedback was very, very positive, they felt the live sessions and the interaction left the child with a smile on their face, they looked forward to joining the meetings, they were excited to share material. Additionally, they felt the format was very easy, interactive, the length was very good, and that it reinforced concepts as needed for children. Additionally, they actually highlighted and thanked one teacher in particular for going above and beyond in creating this very interactive Google Classroom for the child and providing live virtual learning. So, at this time, Mr. Rousher and I are available to take any questions that you may have regarding live instruction.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Pedrosa, and I get, it's obviously a very challenging to Zoom a Zoom, basically what you're trying to do, but obviously, both Mrs. Pedrosa and Mr. Rousher are here to answer any questions and kind of give you a little overview if there's anything in particular, but again, difficult format because you're Zooming to Zoom, but we needed to get that out to the public as well as the board, but I'm gonna open it up to the board if there's any questions.
Yeah, I'm asking, I think I have a few questions, sorry. Um, the Chromebooks, the kids are going to get them the first day of school, I'm guessing, and do those Chromebooks come back and forth with the children to school?
I could, I could, I could answer that, is that the Chrome distribution for the cohort Bs and the remote onlys would be, the high school actually started today, they'll go on also tomorrow, middle school is September eighth and ninth, and the elementary schools are September one, so that will go out. Now, the cohort As don't need to come in because they'll get them the first day of school, so they'll be ready to go. So, the cohort Bs, which would not be in there the first day, or the remote onlys, they would come in and pick up their, I know Mr. Rousher was there today, a nice turnout at the high school for picking up their devices.
If a parent can't get there on the assigned day?
And then she's probably gonna contact the principal, and obviously, they'll be available and work through that.
Okay, I have a couple more questions. This is a whole new world of teaching, as we're all aware, I'm guessing the first couple of days of professional time, teachers will have a lot of time to get themselves comfortable and acclimated to the Zooms and all the programs that they're going to use, is that true?
Yes, absolutely. We've included a PD pathway for technology, we're basically going to be doing a compressed version of it, what are the things that they need from the onset, and then build towards that. The course was built out so that they would be getting some of what you saw today, just getting acclimated and used to some of the new technology. So, different using a Chromebook that we have today, the Chromebooks that we had in the past were not that, didn't have the stylus, didn't have some of the long features, and that was a question from SAP, so we built that into it. In addition to that, we're going to be doing Google Classroom, ScreenCastify, and then also working with Zoom. The course was written in a way that we're gonna be given three hours of time to get that done on the first couple of days, and then we're gonna have a question and answer period, so that if teachers have any questions of what they are going through, or need some support or help, it'll be available to them.
Um, do parents have anything posted online for them as well? So, then how about the tutorial, because they're gonna need to take that as well?
Yes, we'll work on that, and it will be getting material done from Zoom.
And that will be posted on the website, so parents like us and everybody else, if there's any questions?
Provide that, actually, with the classroom, people, they ensure on their computer, keep their...
Yeah, we're trying to build what we call Parent PD Academy, and we're using a lot of the feedback from our subcommittees to be able to guide that. In addition to that, we've been talking to our teacher leaders and also the principals about streamlining some of the apps, that seemed to be one of the things that was brought up quite often, that especially here at the middle school, the high school, going from one teacher that's using Remind, and another teacher perhaps using Class Tab, we did have a recommendation from some parents, including a research piece that came in talking about the benefits of Class Tab, so Mr. Rousher and I have looked at that, because it really does allow you to be able to translate very easily, to get communication with the parents.
That goes versus Remind, so...
Versus Remind. Yes.
If this child is absent from a Zoom for whatever reason, will they be marked absent from the day, how can they make up the work if they're at home?
I'll be having that one. No, it's up to you. Oh, sure. Yeah, they will be able, and again, it would be a case by case where we look at if there's opportunities that may be for the lesson, so they'll be able to get back on that lesson if possible, so that would really be the situation. But again, the thing I want to stress in with the parents is that, is that should be a regular school day, the students have to be there. Obviously, in a regular school day, students are absent, so they do have some requirements to make up, so that's no different than if they missed that area, but there may be a little bit more opportunities to make that. If it's a cohort A student that misses an online, they could probably meet back with the teacher when they can back on, but the remote onlys, it becomes a little bit more challenging, but they would, they would be able to, in certain cases, look at a recorded lesson.
One thing for me, what if they miss a school day, but aren't up to doing the work at home, for both?
Again, it depends on what the work is. The part that we miss is the direct instruction, and that's really, when we, when we broke off in March, it was like we had really not the tools that we needed, so we did a lot of, here's the assignment, try to do it, I'll correct it, and most students struggled, some of them, some of them did very, very well, some of them were very independent, but we found, but we found a lot of... But we found a lot of our students really needed that interaction with the teacher. So, I do have a number of parents who said I may not be able to get online. And, and that's something I said, that's gotta be something that you have to work out with the teacher, uh, to see where we are. It has to be the exception rather than the rule. And that's kinda where we are. And again, when we have a setup like this, there's always gonna be things that we have to work through. And we know that. And some parents are, they're with my grandparents. We've had work with the preschools and the nursery schools to say, actually preschools, to say, they need to be on at this time and they, and I've actually talked to whole top and Goddard and, and as we grow, and they're willing to do that. So, even though the students are with them, they're willing to have them sit down and then work on some of their assignments if they get the instruction. That's really the thing that they missed was that interaction with the teacher. So, we wanna impress them on that. That's the most important part. But again, we know that there's gonna be certain, all the challenges that we're still facing as families.
Right, so the, the point would be like it's, the day is Monday for any class. Your kid doesn't wanna get up for school and you can't just say, well, then just turn the computer on and do it. Right?
Um, my last question is, um, so the microphone will be worn by the teacher and we're gonna minimize background noise from your presentation. Um, so my daughter's at home on her remote day, working with her sixth grade sister because I will be teaching at another school. Um, if my daughter has a question on, you know, why does A plus B equals C? She's not gonna be able to answer that right, ask the question, how to answer it right away, will she? Since there's no dialogue, will she have to wait two hours for the remote?
There's a chat. And it depends on the teacher, kind of the location.
Well, what we've been building into the class and talking to the teachers about is establishing procedures and protocols from the onset. So, for questions, it could be that they're using the chat feature, they could ask the question. It could be, um, they're modeling a demonstration, then they're gonna ask for questions. Then they may have the kids do application of it, but there will be an opportunity for that communication.
And they'll type the question?
They will type the question if they're able to.
So, similar to the Google Meet.
It is, it is very similar. Actually, what we recorded that in was using that so that they would see what it would look like. And then in one of the videos that we had on there, we actually had the chat feature working so that we had, we actually had the supervisors and some of the other administrators have students on the side and they were chatting in on their responses or perhaps a question.
And it's set the same way, so they'll be, people will be able to see that it'll pop up kind of thing.
Very similar.
And there's two other options, obviously, the, the hour at the end of the day for those students that are remote. That can't replace the instruction, but it certainly could help students if all of that can extra help session for those students who were remote, uh, for that day. And the second thing is, is just that the students don't necessarily are gonna be interactive for five hours of the day. In a regular lesson, the teacher may have a, uh, a, a lesson that they teach, a whole class instruction for maybe 10 minutes. Then they may break into individual groups, which means then there's some interaction that way. They can break, and that's the advantage of having those chat rooms is you can, almost as we, we talk about teaching, breaking up into small groups, that's really your small group instruction. Some might be in front of you, some might be in those chat rooms and so forth in a room, which that allows us to do that. So, there'll be some, a lot of interaction, it'll be a lot of work, but that's, it'll be that, that chance that people get to.
There's an expectation of flexibility, I'm hoping, because like I said, you know, my parents aren't computer savvy, but they're gonna have my fourth grader and I'm not gonna be there to help, so.
We totally understand that. And it's gonna be a learning process for us. But I think that the important part, I, I try to stress with them, and they're a lot more tech savvy than I am. I try to get the teachers to say, you're teaching a lesson to 24 students. 12 of them happen to be in front of you and 12 of them happen to be outside listening to you. If you take that approach and you just do a regular lesson, that's really what you need now. Again, you're gonna get questions in the classroom and you're gonna get questions that are remotely that you have to answer from chat. They'll get better as we, don't expect all of our teachers to be here. Some of them are there, but we know this is our expectations for our teachers and then people will grow from that. That's all.
I, I just have two quick questions. Um, first one to Mr. Rousher. Uh, do we have a way to test our network and make sure that we can handle all this?
Yes, so, uh, Zoom actually breaks that what computers should be using based on bandwidth or, or about one band per connection. So, the students actually will not be in the class, will not be connected to the session. So, only the, I guess not the teachers, it's just the dead old. So, we have only bandwidth for that, if we even come out.
Okay. Right, and, um, I'm just, I'm still very concerned about our youngest students, our kindergarten, first second grade students who may not have the motor skill development or the computer savvy, uh, experience to, uh, log in and communicate with a teacher at a Zoom meeting. Are we, you know, how, I know you mentioned them doing the, the parent, uh, training and stuff. Um, do we have an opportunity maybe to, uh, to work with these students or give them some, uh, instruction prior, even if we give it to them remotely so that they can experiment and plow in and stuff like that?
Well, if, when we've been doing our demos and going through, it was apparent that we need to make sure that the kids are not only getting Chromebooks, but they're getting a mouse as well.
Correct.
Because we did realize that, you know, some of the other ones were having difficulties just using the pad. We also spoke to the teachers about balance, um, making sure that we're still reinforcing handwriting. That's very, very important. And also really using, and it's funny, Mr. Pitt spoke about our new teacher orientation. Big part of that, we use Harry Wong. And we've been talking about the importance of procedures and expectations. So, really giving yourself that opportunity to go over the procedures and expectations first two weeks, however long it's gonna take, so that the children are able to feel comfortable and then the parents on the other side are able to be able to support it.
Yeah, it's, it's about the parents, the students, the teachers.
Yeah, and our kindergartners, um, primarily, um, will be in, in the building for two and a half hours.
Right, that's true.
So, those, those youngest ones, um, it is the ones that, the remote ones that we really need to make sure that we are supporting and that we're providing a little bit more. But you're absolutely right. I also wanted to just respond to, um, Mrs. Mount's, um, question about being very flexible and fluid. And at the beginning, uh, Mr. Pitt did talk about, you know, the ever-changing needs. We actually constructed a handbook for the, the remote and virtual with teacher input. And that's our, that's our model, that's our goal. The statement is basically, we're gonna provide high-quality instruction in a flexible and fluid learning environment which responds to the ever-changing circumstances. So, we want teachers to realize that we, we, we get this. Um, it's not gonna happen, you know, overnight or instantaneously, but we're gonna be there to support. The other thing Mr. Chadaway had us do is really try to construct things like, what is what they need immediately? And the teachers told us what they needed immediately and that's the way we built our, our courses and our PD design plan.
I have a quick one, um, for the younger ones. I myself have a second grader coming in. And I know from the end of last year that being on for five hours a day this time, stuff for all of us, especially those of us who aren't used to being on a computer all day. Is there a break? Is there some kind of break brought into the day where, you know, like there were times that my son has just done after a period of time. I mean, I think it's unrealistic to think that a six or seven-year-old is gonna sit in front of the computer and have no break and just kind of sit and do it like a tenth grader would. So, is there something built into the school day where there's a?
Now, understand, it'll be a regular school day, so there'll be recess. So, even though you're home, you will have recess. So, that's a break. We'll have lunch. There'll be a lunch during, during the school day in the elementary school. So, that'll be a time that they can turn the computer off and tell, hey, we're gonna come back on in, uh, in 20 minutes, a half hour. So, there will be, and that's really the important, even to the fact if the teacher says, okay, here's our lesson. Okay, now everybody work independently. They may be working with a pencil and paper, not really looking at the computer, and then they have to go back on in 10 minutes and say, this is where I work. So, I think you're really important, especially for a younger child. We don't expect five hours sitting and constantly working. That is unrealistic.
That might be a nice, I mean, social, emotional.
That, absolutely. That is all part of that, too.
Group activity or, you know, something that's supposed to get moving with everything. Now, there's so many things out there.
We did, we did build in the model and we really include with movement. Um, it's a lot of time for young ones to attend to, even for older students as well. Certainly, a lot of time that you're on a computer screen. So, we really spoke to the teachers about designing their lessons, thinking about how much are you gonna do with direct instruction? How much time are you gonna have for them to work in a group? Um, the other thing is, is that what Mr. Rousher had recommended Zoom is because you're able to put kids when they're gonna be applying or working or leaving for maybe, you know, outdoor activity, there'll be a waiting room so that kids can go into that. And when the teacher needs to restart the session, it's not that the kids have to come back, click on, click on another calendar request. So, we're trying to make this as seamless as possible, but you are absolutely right. It's a lot of time for a little one to be able to sit there.
Mr. Jenner, back to you. Comment on your thing. Um, so we also see we've got a page or two that automatically puts students. So, basically, it's a QR code, they're gonna scan it from the camera, that automatically logs into the form.
Oh, great.
Right, right to a size of message that could plug in, plug in.
Oh, that's awesome. Oh, that's great. Thank you. Um, I, and my other question, who deals with the, the specialty teachers, music, art, uh, phys ed, et cetera. Um, are they transitioning into the classroom to deliver the instruction? Or is, we, cause we're not having the students move.
Well, in the phys ed, they would.
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't.
Yes, yes. And even in some cases, I think even the band would go to a bigger area. They might not have that in there. Uh, even the scene part, if they do that, those areas that would be, but for the most part, the specials go with the.
Um, you answered my question about the Chromebook distribution that's gonna go through the schools. Are the kids bringing their Chromebooks back and forth to school each day?
Yes.
So, it's, is it up to the parents to get covers and protective gear for them or are you providing that?
Yeah, we, I mean, and Chris, I don't know if you wanna talk about the, the durability of it and again, the charges that we give them, because that's another important.
Global devices, similar, I mean, by Facebook, yes, and Apple. Um, so, just to prove it hard, I'm, 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 for the Thanksgiving. So, I would invite an opportunity to. So, there'll be no workbooks? Really, it's gonna just be Chromebook?
There, there can be, especially for the younger children. I mean, I've seen the kindergarten who are remote only, there, there's gonna have to be some of that. And again, it's, it's the younger, uh, obviously more stressed in the younger grades, like a first grader even there. There, and again, if you have to practice writing, you have to practice writing, you can do that on the Chromebook.
So, after the assignment, like you were saying, does the children have styles and the teacher?
Yeah, the teachers have a style. But to answer Mr. Goldsch's question, for some of the programs that we use, we did purchase at-home kits. So, for Wilson, instead of kids going back and forth with the, the tiles and the whiteboards, uh, we actually purchased some at-home kits. We're actually gonna be creating some kits also for some of the map manipulators that need to go home. On the older levels, some of the things that we know that quite often they're gonna need to bring back and forth, but they're very small and they would get lost. So, we're creating kits per se.
Okay, how are we handling the OG, uh, for any kids that are virtual kids?
Uh, they do have the option of coming to school for those services.
Okay.
And that's just something they would set up an appointment with the O P O P day.
Okay.
I mean, there, there are ways to do remotely, but we certainly wanna give them the option of coming into the building.
Okay, so those parents would call the school and set that up there?
Speech to.
Yes. If they wanna come in for a certain, they would just set up an appointment with that, with the teacher or with the, with the services in view.
Are there certain days of the week? Do we know that or that's based on case-by-case?
It would probably be case-by, case-by-case, but I would think one of the more logical days would be the Wednesday when there's no students in the building. That would be probably the time that the, the two, that the teacher or the students who are remote only would be best coming in for the building, I'd like to be best.
On Wednesday, since that's the remote-only day, since there's a lot of teachers with childcare issues, if they have school-aged children, since the teachers will be working remotely, can their school-aged children come to sit in the classroom?
No, it's probably not a good idea and we haven't, and, but we did go through all of these. There's like 50-some accommodations. Some of them, uh, we've allowed them to work remotely on the Wednesday, uh, but they have to do the, they can work at home remotely with the remote-only students. They can do that. So, we've been very accommodating with the staff because we know, I, there's, there's a lot of different situations and scenarios. But I think of all the ones that we did, I, I think we probably were able to accommodate almost all of them with some, with some huge schedule.
Okay, I guess, question I have is a parent expectation of teacher's time. Uh, teacher's contract day goes from 8:30 to, let's say, 8:30 to 3:00, right? Uh, I know I got complaints from parents and from teachers. Well, I sent to a, a teacher a question at quarter after four, I got my homework and I didn't hear back from her for two days and my papers were further behind than what I got here. Our teacher's day ends at the day, at the time that a teacher day ends. And it's not fair to expect them, I saw teachers answering questions 20 hours a day. Anyway, it got to a point where they were just, for the end of the year, they're obviously burning because it was just too much and you just couldn't keep up the constant.
And that's, that's the advantage of having that school day.
I understand that there are limitations.
And when you had that flexible schedule, I have quote-unquote office hours or whatever, then parents, oh, I'll get you at 8 o'clock, I'll get you at night. We can't have that. And obviously, our staff has their own personal lives. So, they have that extra hour at the end, right, that they can handle that. And it's once that day is over.
If any parents are listening, I just wanna emphasize that, you know, that was a major complaint from parents and from teachers.
Yeah, they would get to them.
It's coming from both sides. And, and some of the parents, I understand they're essential workers, they have to be at work and they're single parents and all this kind of stuff. It was an impossible situation from their regard to be able to work with their kids. And yet, they're sending questions to at 8:30 at night expecting instantaneous answers from the teachers. And of course, some cases that happened, some cases that didn't happen. Uh, I know one teacher's getting emails, the parent worked second shift and was getting questions from the parent about their child's work at quarter after 3:00 in the morning. You know?
Yeah, which, which for them is probably normal time. For anybody else, it's not.
Exactly, but they're expecting quick responses and that's unusual.
That is a trade-off, but the teachers are teaching for the day that happened.
There's no reason to expect that.
Absolutely, especially under this scenario because you have in-person, if you're able to, you have that extra hour at the end of the day.
Why, that's where we are. I, I just wanna put that out there so we have parents that are listening, they can understand.
Yep.
Teachers have lives too and they have their own responsibilities. They're not, not in a beck and call 24/7.
And that's why we want this scenario to look just like a school day. Where we have 24 students in first period and 12 over here, 12 over there, but it will develop rings at the end of the day and they have the extra hour at the end of the day to get any questions and that's it. Or anything after that, teachers could certainly figure it out the next day and that would be the time.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out there to make sure everybody understands that. Good point. All right. Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Rousher and Mr. Pedrosian? All right, Mr. Chadaway, you have a question?
Okay, thank you very much, Diane and Chris. Very, thank you. Um, just going through some things and it, as, as, uh, Mr. Pitt said, and added a laugh that said, well, nothing has really changed and everything's changed pretty much. We have to be prepared for a lot of change. But just to give you a little update of some of the things, and we've, we've gone over a lot of things in the, in the previously. But there are many changes since our last meeting and we tried to adjust a lot of things to be prepared for the opening of, of school in September. But this is not like any other schedule. We have to be ready to be able to pivot on anything that, that comes up. I mean, I've been in education for over 40 years, but this is not, I can't use any of my experience because this is brand-new to all of us. So, I think it's an important part that our parents, our students, our teachers and our administrators all have to be flexible enough that the only way this will work is if we're all working on this together. The main change, uh, has been the governor's announcement that permits school districts to develop a plan to provide for all students to participate remotely. So, previously, we allowed students and parents to opt for remote-only instruction or require school districts to provide in-person instruction. The new policy obviously says that school districts now have the option of having the entire student body to receive remote-only instruction. But here is the caveat. The option for the school district to go full remote is based on only being able to provide, on not only being able to provide a safe and healthy environment, most likely due to one of the factors, either a lack of staff, a lack of PPE, or a deficient HVAC system. Those are the three big areas that would be allowed for, for schools to go remote-only. This is not the case here in Manchester. Uh, so, we are fortunate to be able to provide in-person instruction for those parents and students to choose that. But we also have a number of parents that choose to go remote-only. So, we respect all of their decisions. They're all difficult decisions, they're all personal decisions, but they do have that option. Uh, our return-to-school plan, which we've developed and under all these circumstances, they were, it was reviewed by the executive county superintendent and he's determined that we've addressed all of the necessary requirements. Now, those plans still go to the state to get officially approved. So, you will see a number of school districts that have their, their plans returned. They weren't approved at the state level. Ours is at the state level. It's been, we, the county superintendent said we have all the things in place, but that still has to be taken care of at the D O E level. Uh, we've approved about 28% of our students to receive remote-only instruction, which means that about 72% of them are gonna receive some type of in-person instruction. We've also accommodated many.
We've also accommodated many staff requests, over fifty, due to medical or mainly childcare issues. Our administrators have done really an outstanding job in working with our staff to make the teaching schedule work with these requests for accommodations. And we were trying to be as accommodating as possible because as, as you said, Mr. Paydor, our staff have personal lives and serve commitments. They're also fulfilled. As long as we're able to make these changes, our staff is really excited to get back to work with our students. Kindergarten, preschool, E L L students, self-contained special needs students will be able to receive in-person instruction for all five days. Our regional day will also be able to tend a regular schedule for five days.
Are they having a short day or they have to go back?
They have, regional days will pull back. Yes, our own students will be on that five-day run. In regards to school safety, our temperature kiosks have come in. They were delivered today, then actually the people picking up the Chromebooks went through the kiosks, the temperatures, and they're all set up for visitors entering the building. I know Mr. Lawrence, we can talk a little bit more about that, but I just thought. Teacher laptops are all in. They've been loaded up with the necessary programs and I go, Chris and his staff have worked very hard on that. Our student Chromebooks are really set to be distributed also. They're set up. The Cohort A students will pick them up at the first day and the others will be given an opportunity to pick them up on those days of convention. And lastly, our staff are receiving training on the educational platform. And I want to thank the board for allowing us to adjust the schedule. That allows us to put up front dispatch the staff development day. So we now have three days in front. And that's certainly more important to get those trainings in there. And I want to thank the board for allowing us to adjust the schedule. It's critical that the students attend the school day regardless of whether they're in-person or not. They are in school. That's an important part, and I think we mentioned it for parents, that is a change from last year. And again, means are, we're not going to be answering emails at eight o'clock, but our staff will be available during that timeframe to be able to teach in class. It won't necessarily mean that the students have to sit in front of the computer for five straight hours, especially in the elementary, as we said, there's research, there's recess, there's gym class, there's a lot of number of different things. There's lunchtime in the elementaries and there's times when the teacher will have them working on something. There may even be times in the elementary where they take their class and say, okay, it's time to stop from the computer, get up and walk around or walk and stand, I guess that we can do there. But the students at home would be able to do something, so. I do want to, I do want to realize and we did make a lot of challenges, but the staff has really worked with us to try to make this work. I guess that many of them would say, I will be glad to be in school if I could do this. Or I could be glad, I want to be in school if I could do that. And I mean, as much as it was difficult for our students not to be with our staff, I think it was difficult for our staff not to be with their students. So as a teacher, we're trying to support as many things that we can. In some cases, we may have teachers who are teaching just remote-only students. And that's the case. But each decision was kind of predicated on what was best for the students, the staff in that particular building. They were all different types of situations. Then answered over a hundred and twenty emails from parents on that parent input page. And again, they were all very good questions. They just needed some help. This is my particular case, this is my particular case. I think in the most part, we've addressed all except the old childcare issue. I don't have an answer of what do I do with that, my child for the other three days? I don't have that. There are a couple of options, but that's one that I feel valid that we're not able to address, but we are able to address it to some degree. I do realize that the parents are making a tremendous amount of sacrifices. They're hitting a lot of challenges. But the important part is that they get their students available to be in that school on that day to make it a regular school day. That's a really important part. As far as the other issues go, I think the board that met are pleased to recommend Carrie Young for the position of Vice Principal Board at Ridgeway. Carrie has an outstanding experience, as you've heard, as a teacher and leader. She's currently a Dean of Students in the Francis Laura Elementary School of Ewing. And she has served as a literacy coach and involved in helping teachers through T D, classroom management, instruction and developing behavioral planning. She'll be a great addition to our administrative staff. Chromebooks and giving the dates of the Chromebooks again, the high school is April twenty-sixth and eighth and twenty-seventh.
April eighth?
Very good. August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, thank you. Middle school is September eighth and ninth, and elementary is September one. M T S, the orientation, the kindergarten orientations, I think I gave that to the board, but they're August thirty-first and September one for M T S. Ridgeway is pre-k is the thirty-first and kindergarten is the first. And Whiting is kindergarten is the thirty-first and preschool is the first. A video of the school will be shown in some carries, some cases, I think some of you might have seen the video. I think they did a really nice job. High school, there was a virtual tour and a Genesis tour available, but they've also had appointments for students coming in, the high school students coming in and visiting. We did, on the agenda, you'll see that we had a request from the township for our middle school gym to be used as a holding place during the pandemic. But we are out of school that week, so there will be no students in the building. And they'll be able to access the gym, but not really be able to go into the building at all. So that will be a good situation there. Again, I want to thank Mr. Garza and Mr. Rausch and Jamie Glassberg for doing a lot of the training. And it's going to be ongoing. It's not just one, just the three days. We understand that as the year goes through, we're going to need to continue to do ongoing training. We do have one other piece of information that I want to go and I'll see if Chris is, Chris, have you queued that up? Yes, we have a great announcement to make and we were finally allowed to say something today. So with that in mind, I'm going to see if Chris can queue up the video and then I'll explain what it's about. But it's a really nice thing for Manchester. So Chris, if you can queue us up.
Spanish world language at Manchester Township High School in the Manchester Township School District. Lucia has.
For giving me the chance to start. Next month, okay, we're starting.
Meet Lucia Giovati De Leo, this year's Ocean County Teacher of the Year, who teaches French and Spanish world language at Manchester Township High School in the Manchester Township School District. Lucia has taught at Manchester Township High School for twenty-three years. Lucia received a bachelor's degree in secondary education with a certification in French and two minors, Spanish and Italian. She did not realize when she began her career the impact she has already made on the community from showcasing her Italian heritage at the cultural fairs, with the culture awareness club, to volunteering with the drama and world language clubs.
Okay, so the announcement is, and we knew this before. More of that's it. Okay. We were sworn to secrecy on this, but obviously Lucy De Leo is the Ocean County Teacher of the Year. She's representing that. I know she's a more deserving person. I know her personally, I know what she does in the classroom. But reading her bio, Mr. George and I got a chance to read her bio and her history. And we'll bring her back and have her talk a little bit more when things get, hopefully, a little bit better. At least maybe in September, maybe we'll bring her back. But today was the first day that they made the official announcements and we were now allowed to say something. So it worked out perfectly. Obviously, a world language teacher works with her AP, very strong advocate for E L L. And so she kind of works the gamut as far as all of that. But her background, and I don't want to try to talk to you about, but she's a fantastic background. Basically, just put in the situations which are challenging and she's found a way to be successful all through. Really, a great, when we read, and I know Mr. George and I read them before we sent them to the county, I said, I think we have a good chance here. I said, was that well done? So congratulations, Lucy, and congratulations, Manchester. It's great to have, and we've had a number of county teachers of the year. A number of them is special education, this one, the first one in world language. So again, congratulations.
All right, Mr. Stradler, since we're not going to be having a report card presentation in October, would that be an appropriate time for us to recognize our teachers of the year from last year that we never got a chance to do?
And that's, we can do that, yes. That would be great, it'd be a great time to get. So October, were we thinking?
Well, usually the report card in October, and since there is no report.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I always say there's an opportunity there to use the time before that, asking for the chance to, will be passed on back to school nights and all those kinds of things.
So I think great, and I will set it up for our October board meeting and that'll be great. But it's really nice to have a county teacher. And again, our other teachers of the year were all outstanding also.
And they should be recognized. It's just unfortunate this year's late as it is. Actually, one of our parents has passed away, actually.
And we did recognize my building member, but never.
She has passed away since you've threatened my question. So I think we owe it to our staff to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I want to use another venue, Mr. Lawrence, to have it in, because this is very tight already.
We could probably, we could probably look at the other door.
I was saying the high school.
Yeah, I should say the high school.
Excuse me, okay, I didn't hear the other door.
Yeah.
Because if we're trying to maintain this, it's hard and that kind of stuff will be.
And having all that piece, yeah, so I think that would be great. So I'll move forward.
So we can set it up in the high school, create a power meeting, I think that would be very worthwhile.
Outstanding. Congratulations, Lucy, I hope you're listening. Okay, that is my report, Baker?
All right. Lawrence?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates. Personal protective equipment is being distributed to all the schools and departments this week. Each staff member will get free washcloth masks. We're also distributing a belt and U disposable face mask, N ninety-five mask, K ninety-five mask and face shields, disposable gowns, gloves and face shield, and non-contact monitors are being provided for all nurses. Additional gowns are being provided for the staff at regional day school, with the contact they have with the students down there. And many of them will not be able to wear masks due to medical reasons. So we're sending a little more P B down that way. Temperature kiosks came in on Tuesday. They are being rolled out this week. We got a couple of them up and running, ready. Like they've said, we're kind of getting a little test run on what they might be like as people come to the building.
Do you want us to know that test run from me in case someone has had a time with the COVID, see how they're working?
Yeah, today, right? I just like to see how it works.
Yeah, we're actually doing.
High school tomorrow.
Yeah, we're doing high school tomorrow, Chromebook pickup.
What time?
You remember, Chris, but I don't.
Well, before.
Oh, before, okay, yeah.
Okay.
But they'll also be doing it at the elementary school and the middle school.
All right, it's just, it'd be nice to see what we're documenting.
The district did purchase those i-Wave H V A C systems. They're basically bipolar ionization equipment. What it does is it purifies the air that is brought into buildings. The other thing that it does, it does eliminate mold bacteria and viruses on the coil and machine and in the living space. So obviously with air quality being one of the priorities of opening, this is going to improve the air quality in our buildings. We are also.
So teachers will be instructed not to open windows?
They can.
And that's a system, big time, you open windows.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like our, for example, our classrooms that have unit ventilators, which are, those are all our classrooms with outside walls. Those units themselves are bringing enough fresh air where they shouldn't have to. But as far as them not being able to.
Which is a safety violation, right, the creators, that kind of stuff as well, that has to be windows.
Yeah, I think the working guidance is not too broad. I understand that there are going to be extenuating circumstances on the team that have something wrong and that. My request, we can certainly look at those on a case-by-case basis. To a point, the systems aren't made to run and the vast majority.
It's like if you're running air conditioning at home, you don't open your door. It's actually worse against it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so just to add, we're most worried additional plexiglass. So we can put some additional barriers up for staff that are frequent contact with visitors and students. And, you know, when I spoke with all the principals last week, you know, obviously I'm relying on them to kind of keep me informed on what's going on in the buildings, additional P B if needed, be brightened out. You know, it's fairly readily available. There's not a tremendous need time on most of it. So, you know, we'll keep on, we'll keep on that as we go through the year.
How about sit cans and a hyde, do we have any of that going around?
Yeah.
And was that checked, because there's a whole big list that you think are hand sanitizer or not?
Yeah, we're going to have portable hand sanitizing units outside, phys ed classes and sports. We have, we have hand sanitizer units in all the schools, fully operated hand sanitizer units. We'll have hand sanitizer in classrooms that don't have sinks. So they still say soap and water are best in classrooms that don't have, we will have hand sanitizer. We will have this effect.
And hand sanitizer, was all the accredited ones, the approvals, not the ones with their same.
Correct. So that's kind of where we're at with P B. Then just one thing on the governor's speech, I mean, the governor did speak last week. He provided his, I guess, his amended state budget. Basically, where we're at is we're still hold based on when we passed our budget, our state aid has stayed the same. Essentially, what he did was the notices, the state notices, the revised state notices that they put out in July are the notices that are in this new proposed budget. So in that, when that notice came out, our state aid was changed. So we are still hold for the 2021 school year. And lastly, there's a resolution on the agenda to approve an agreement with Lakers Almenchi to provide them meals for the 2021 school year. We had done this for many years, all the years that I was here. Last year, they made a business decision and tried something else. From what I understand, it went, it went okay. But they are coming back to Manchester, so that agreement is on the agenda for approval. And then essentially how that works is if they place an order, we prepare the meals, we deliver them there and it's their responsibility to disperse them to their kids and do that. So that's my review.
I have a question. Have the Title I forms coming in for the free and reduced lunch that we can start?
Yeah, so we've already gone through our first round of direct certification and that captured about three hundred and seventy kids. So those kids don't have to file lunch applications. But, yeah, that, we said, we got, we actually got those out fairly early this year because we knew that there would probably be a spike up in participation. So those are coming in and as they come in, we log them in. And what we'll do probably right after school starts is we'll look and see which applications that were on file from last year that are now in that thirty-day carryover period that we haven't received new applications for. We'll do a second mailing. Information is on the website. We will also be sending out information to all of our parents on the upcoming school year as far as how we use our preorder system. Obviously, again, talking about the application, the pre-reduced application, that they can apply anytime during the school year if their economic status changes. Because there are going to be some new things this year that they were not, they have not done before. So we are going to try to get that information out so that they have time to review it, get their account set up. And so that when we open up on September tenth with students, that they're ready.
So on September tenth, all elementary students need to come to school with a lunch unless they're getting pre-reduced or purchasing it?
Correct.
Will another announcement go out to the parents that might not think that they need to do that?
Yeah, I mean, look, I don't, I mean, there are, I think, I believe there are lunches built into the elementary schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can definitely do, we can definitely do a robo-poll, something like that, right before school starts and let them know. But all the instructions on how to create an account, how to buy, you know, how to go in and preorder your food and all that stuff, we're going to have, we want to send written documents out so they can follow along. Because that's, you know, that would be kind of hard to follow in a robo-poll, but we can obviously definitely put something out.
And account balances from last year, like I know my daughters have, they always send in a check just that way, we always have it covered. They'll just stay in their account until.
Yeah, for now, yeah. So if they had, if they had positive balances, that's what they'll start with. If they have negative balances, you know, we'll do what we've always done, as far as trying to collect that. But one of the things that will be different this year, at least for the time being, is students that are not pre-reduced. If you do have a student that is going to purchase a lunch, they are going to need to have money on their account to use. If they don't have money on their account, they will not be able to use the preorder system. So that is important and that's something that we will put out. But we are trying to limit cash transactions as much as possible. You know, obviously, we realize that things come up and we definitely don't want kids to not have a meal. So, you know, we will, you know, make an exception here and there, but, you know, we are going to have to reinforce at the school level or at our level in pre-order, they're going to have to pre-order.
Thank you.
Craig, is it still free and reduced, the reduces this year?
Yeah, so yeah, so this year, one of the big changes this year is last year. Yeah, so, yeah, so this year, one of the big changes this year is last year, you know, free was free. And if you were, if you were reduced, you paid 40 cents for a lunch, 30 cents for a breakfast. This year, regardless of how you qualify, free or reduced, lunches will be free for those. They will, so they will get, they will be able to eat.
And have you figured out how you're going to distribute since not everybody's going every day?
Yeah, so on the days that kids are here, you know, we are going to deliver meals to the classroom. On the days that they're not here, we are going to set up pickups at the high school, middle school, every day. We're gonna, we'll put the times out there where students or students obviously that can drive at the high school level or parents can come and pick up meals for the days that their kids are not here. The full remote day for the parents that are, or the kids that are fully remote now, that will be fully remote five days a week. They will have designated times every day that they can come and pick up meals at our middle school and our high school.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That's it. All right, do you have any more member requests?
Yeah, I just have a couple of little things. First, I also want to extend my congratulations to Mrs. Delaio on becoming Ocean County Teacher of the Year. I've, as a parent, both my sons had Mrs. Delaio for Spanish when they were at the high school. And both thrived in her class and raved. I know my oldest son, Christopher, always said that, that Mrs. Delaio was one of his favorite teachers. So again, congratulations on her for records. I had the opportunity this past week to observe a little bit of the football practice of the high school and as well as some of the band work that was going on with the, with the marching band as well. And it's great to see our professionals, our coaches, and our band director and her staff working with our students. And our students are excited to be, you know, coming in and, you know, watching the temperature checks and the masks on and making sure somebody, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And watching the football practice and auto no contact drills and things like that. So, you know, again, I want to thank our coaches and such who were doing a great job with our students and wish them best of luck as they prepare for their season.
Thank you.
I have a couple. I made my rounds this week, it seems. So a couple of quick things. Melanie and I just met at the high school, like Mr. Tate. We went to the new teacher workshop. It was really well done. I've been for a nice visit. It was really well done. Wasn't a lot of teachers there, right? But it was, you could tell that they were getting a lot out of it. I was, it was very well organized. And this girl's in, and was there, and Chris as well, so that was good. Really quickly, senior parking lot painting has been going on. I've been witness to that. That's such a great idea and a great, a great thing. So I've been dropping off my daughter for tennis this week and been seeing those progress, so that's kind of neat. Also, today, since I was dropping off the tennis, I picked up my daughter's phone book. That was very well organized. Chris and, and the high school there, they did a great job with that. So that was really well done, very organized, you know, did it by grade level, and as they needed, they had that done. And last thing for me, the middle school tour was wonderful. Mine and my wife went yesterday. I popped in today, just because I wasn't able to go yesterday. I popped in just to see how the classrooms were set up, but it was pretty interesting. Buildings, buildings looked really good and very well done. So, you know, just studying staff did a really good job with that, and it was pretty well organized and great.
Good for me.
I would like to start by congratulating Mrs. Delaio on her achievement. That's awesome. Like Tony just said, the parking spots are amazing. I've seen several pictures on social media. I think it's fun for the kids, a nice way, and I can't wait till they're all done, so that way I can actually go. My kids and I love art, so we can go walk around and, you know, hold on to what we think is the best. It was nice for the board to have the opportunity to meet Mrs. Carrie Young. Hopefully, the new vice principal for Ridgeway Elementary School, she's got a lot of positive energy and seems like she can bring a lot of greatness to our district. And on social media, I had seen something about declaring the first game or very early in the season a senior night. And I think it would be a great idea to have a senior night early in the seasons in case for some reason they come to an abrupt halt. So that way, all of our seniors can be properly recognized for their achievements on the field and in the band. So I'm hoping that, you know, Mr. Lister can make that happen for our high school seniors. And I want to wish all the student staff the best of luck for a happy and healthy school year. And hopefully, sooner than later, we'll all be back together full-time, five days a week.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
So definitely congratulations to Mrs. Delaio. I love her. Adrian loves her. You are amazing. We appreciate your energy, your vibrance. She brings warm, great traits to Adrian all the time. He's the publicist of her multicultural club. So she is so passionate about education, and I hope that, you know, down the line, when I get to be, I don't know how many years she's been teaching, but, you know, I'm 20 years in, but I hope when I'm ever at that point, she said, I hope I still have that enthusiasm. She's awesome. She's wonderful. I want to do a couple of things. One of the big things at school board reunion on July 30th was a webinar entitled, "What Free Resources Does Google Have?" A Google representative presented that, so I thought it was important for, I thought at that point we were doing Google. But I enjoy Google on my school district, so it was very beneficial. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of these things are not going to be happening until the end of September, so they say, but we'll see what happens. We had three county association for leadership meetings for school board association of this past, like, every two weeks. We might have met four times. I just don't remember. It was just so many times. They all would be re-upping the meetings, too.
Yeah.
The last meeting that we had this past week, the Cal meeting, we had two representatives from the Department of Education that came, and they spoke. Yeah, Jeff Gale and Tom Bianino. They were talking quite a bit about how will security drills go and how we can be handling those. So right now, they said that there are some pieces of legislation that are working on. Right now, those, those drill laws are still in effect, correct? Because they might have changed in the past few days. So right now, that everything is still in effect, so that might be changing, so they're pushing to, to get that changed.
Yeah.
That was very informative. What else did I have? Let me see. This coming Monday night at 7:00 or 7:30 is our Ocean County, Monmouth County School Board Association meeting.
Seven, eight thirty?
Is it seven, eight thirty?
Okay.
So that is being held. School board members can go to their emails and sign up and compare. Hope to see here, we have our Monmouth County Superintendent coming to talk with us. I think Ocean County has been invited, so I hope to see Kevin A. on there, be ready. Like Mr. Gold said, I attended the new teacher orientation, too. It's so, so cool to see the new teachers there, such energy. You know, you saw the nervousness, I think, of Mr. Payne and Miss. We can relate to how, how that was exactly before we started teaching, but you guys did a great job. It was so wonderful. Thank you for having very good technology. Thank you for letting us have the ability to talk to the teachers. It was really nice. I saw the senior painting spots. I was ready to paint, Mr. Gold. I'd go to cook a good initiation. You know, but, Mr., Mr., I hope you had something to stop me on that. So I had a couple of that, the middle school and the high school, Mr. Driver, Mrs. Manacagi. I was waiting for Miss Driver to fall down the stairs during the video of the initiation. Or the lovely secretary, the guy who took care of them, so they did good. I was waiting. She didn't have heels on either, so I was going to. But they must have watched the video about three times, so mine felt better. Even going into school and spraying teachers, and the secretaries were wonderful. They really learned. The classes looked great. The high school video, I don't know if you ever got to see the video, oh, the. It was really good. I think that is it. That's my report.
All right, anyone else? Very none. We'll move on now to public participation for agenda items only. So we'll follow the same procedure we've had in previous ones, I assume, Mr. Rafterd. You call in, you will be identified by the last two digits of your phone number, and then you'll ask your question. Sixty-seven? Did they hear you? Yes, sixty-seven.
Star six unmuted, so.
What is this, star six? Star six one U and, and the number sixty-seven.
Zero, seventy?
Seventy zero?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. You know, microphone, Mr. Rafterd, I can barely hear you. Are you?
I don't.
I don't either. Number sixty-four. Unmuted.
Star six.
Star, star six.
That is it.
Okay, that's it, okay. We'll close this portion of it then. Do we have any old business for the board, Mr. Robinson?
No old business, no part of it.
Okay, then we'll move on to the roll call portion of our meeting, the business portion. Section one, A, minutes number one through two, need a motion? Second. All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy? Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. B, personnel services, number one, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. C, transportation, number one, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I know that sports transportation is going to be a major issue for many of the high school parents. And I would just like to suggest out loud that we look to see if transportation can help accommodate the parents to get the kids back to the high school since they're not going to be there every day. I know other districts are trying to work that out. And that'll be a good way to help the parents and the kids participate.
Yeah, we're trying to work that out.
And also on that, second on that, is the late bus for the athletes coming home. Will there be a late bus provided?
At this point, I believe so, yes. It's just the ones we're working on is those students who are remote coming in. That's all, but we should have a late bus. Craig, anyone else? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Dack? I'm sorry. Ms. Pease?
Yes.
And Mr. Tate?
Yes. Do you need to regil? Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Standing on, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. E, shared service agreement of Manchester Township, number one, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Big discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Um, it says that we're going to be approving special law enforcement officers. Is there an opportunity to make sure that each elementary school has one of their own? I know the middle school and high school do, but instead of having a shared one between elementary schools?
We can certainly discuss that. Right now, these are the ones who are re-upping it. They were, actually, it's a three-year contract, so I think they get a 50 cent more raise, I think, each year. But that's what they, we need to approve this to get it to the county, to get it to the township. And, and a later board meeting, we certainly can discuss that.
Yeah, I'd like to also reinforce that. I think it's important that we look to see if we can get additional officers for our elementaries as well.
We certainly can be in discussion.
Great. Any further discussion? I'll be roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. F, use of facility agreement gymnastics, number one, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, we have a figure as how many students we can sustain in gymnastics.
I don't know offhand. We do have a pretty competitive team. We do, they have trained very well. We just don't have, obviously, the equipment. Jackson's been, we've been fortunate enough to be able to share that today to one of the ongoing star third year.
And we provide transportation.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to further note, the state has moved the season, it says, fall to the winter hybrid season.
They'll, they'll be still, the gym will still be built.
This, this is just more or less according to that time frame.
Yeah.
But just so parents and windows, the season has been moved for that and. All right, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
And Mr. Tate?
Yes. All right, section two, A, administrators, number one through four, need a motion?
Close.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. B, personnel, number one through fifty-two, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes, and everything except for number eight. I'll extend on that one, please. All right, so C, student personnel, number one to three, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? I have it actually here. Mr. Rafterd, could you explain just what number one and number two are? Affiliation agreement with Long Island University and King University.
Yeah, those are disagreements that we have in place when we take placements to universities. So it's an ongoing process by re-upping the agreements.
You say take a place, what you mean?
It could be student teachers, it could be OTPT placements, it could be speech placements, all certificated staff everywhere. You know, it's a big part of all the professional development of, obviously, growing the field, and so it's a big part of our.
That's why I wanted to get out there.
Yeah.
So people understand what it is we're talking about or what we talked about these. All right, anyone else have any questions? All right, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. All right, section three, A, finance, numbers one through five, need a motion?
Close.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Jenner?
Yes.
Mr. Scardy?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
Ms. Mapp?
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes. This concludes the business section of our agenda. Now we'll go to public participation for any item not on the agenda. Do we have any calls, Mr. Rafterd?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven?
Yep.
Wow, okay.
Sixty-seven.
Perhaps we should take a break before we do that, then.